I want to welcome you to tonight's city council meeting for the city of Columbia Heights for Monday, August 12th, 2019. Could I have a roll call, please, Nicole?
Councilmember Biskins?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Mershen?
Here.
Councilmember Nowinski?
Here.
And Mayor Schmidt?
Here.
We do not have anyone here for the invocation, so if you are able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, I'll read our mission statement. Our mission is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively address changing citizen and community needs in a physically responsible manner. Next item is to approve the agenda as presented. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Actually, our first guest is not here, so we'll just put her at the end then with the open session. All right. Next item is our consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted as part of the consent agenda by the one motion. Items removed from consent agenda approval will be taken up as the next order of business. Can I, if there are no questions regarding the consent agenda, Kelly, could you go ahead and read a short, brief descriptions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Item A is approval of the minutes of the city council for the meeting of July 22nd, the executive session of July 8th, and the executive session of July 22nd. Item B is acceptance of board and commission meeting minutes, including the EDA minutes from the May 28th open session meeting, the May 28th executive session meeting, the May, I'm sorry, the June 24th meeting, and the July 22nd meeting. Item C is approval of the final compensating change order and acceptance of work for the 2018 miscellaneous concrete repairs and installations project number 1800, finalized payment of $2,367.85 to Standard Sidewalk, Inc. Item D is adoption of resolution 2019-64, and that resolution is ordering the preparation of a feasibility report for Zone 3 Street Seal Coat Program, project number 1801. Item E is adoption of resolution 2019-65. That resolution is ordering preparation of a feasibility report for Zone 4 Street Rehabilitation, project 1802. Item F is the second reading of ordinance 1656. That ordinance authorizes the conveyance of real property to the city of Columbia Heights from the EDA, and that property is located at 4833 University Avenue. Item G is approval of the business license applications included in your packet. And item H is a review of the bills totaling $4,335,919.54, and I will just note that includes payment for the building at 40th and Central, and that's why the amount is so large.
All right. If there are no questions, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowinski, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item we're moving on to is public hearings. Resolution 2019-63 granting preliminary approval for issuance of charter school lease revenue bonds Prodeo Academy project. And, Aaron, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Aaron Sherbick, Community Development Director. The item in front of you is a public hearing for a resolution to consider granting preliminary approval of issuance of charter school lease revenue bonds. So I'd ask that you take a brief presentation from staff before opening the public hearing for comments, and then close the public hearing before we would take action on any matter. So with that, I'll just briefly describe what we're here to consider. Prodeo Academy is in the process of acquiring the property located at 41, 41 University Avenue Northeast. That site currently serves as a location of the Oak Hill Baptist Church. Prodeo Academy intends to remove all of the existing site improvements at that location in preparation for the construction of what would be a brand-new K-8 public charter school. As part of that project, Prodeo Academy is seeking public financing in the form of revenue bonds, and they're requesting that the city participate as a conduit issuer for these bonds. So just a little bit of background about conduit bonds for the benefit of the public. Unlike most bonds, conduit bonds are initiated and issued for the benefit of private entities. As a practical matter, the loan is handled entirely by a separate trustee, and after issuance, the city has almost no role in the administration of the bonds. They're paid for with lease revenue generated by the school, and the city does not pay debt service or any other costs related to the transaction, and as such, the bonds do not have an effect on the city's credit rating, and they are not counted against any statutory limitations on borrowing. That means that there's no new tax levy created for the issuance of this debt. While the city council must approve the issuance of the bonds, all the documents and the transaction are largely handled by the private borrower and the underwriter that serves as the initial purchaser. In most cases, the issuer receives a fee for serving as the conduit. In this transaction, staff has proposed a one-time issuer fee that's equal to 1% of the bond issuance. That total amount has not been determined but is predicted to be in a range of $22 to $24 million, which would generate an issuance fee of $220,000 to $240,000. So the purpose, again, for this evening's hearing is a preliminary approval to meet a statutory public hearing requirement for the proposal. Final approval of the bond issuance would be scheduled to take place on, excuse me, September 9th, pending the results of this hearing. Prodeo has submitted development plans for review by the Planning Commission and City Council, and it's important to note that granting the preliminary approval of the bond issuance does not obligate the city to approve any land use requests that are made by the applicant in conjunction with this proposal. They're two separate issues. If the land use approvals are denied or delayed, this bond issuance would either be delayed or terminated accordingly. And with that, staff would be happy to answer any questions at this time or move to the public hearing.
Councilmember Biskins?
I had a question that was brought to my attention this afternoon. They asked if the city goes out and looks for customers for the conduit loan program that we have.
Councilmember Biskins, that's a good question. Right now, the city is not actively seeking to serve as a conduit issuer for bonds. Typically, it's a project that originates within your city that the project partner approaches the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council members? Okay. At this time, we can open this up to the public for comments. If there are anybody here for comments regarding this issue, this is specifically regarding the charter school conduit revenue bonds, and I think you have a list there.
Go ahead. Okay, yep, the first name I have is Grant Nichols.
Excuse me, ma'am. I apologize to let those people do that, but if some issues at 4229 Central and 4225 Central, we'll be able to address that.
At the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
6001 North Innsbruck Drive, 203. I had a question for this Spanish immersion school. If we vote against it, or if the city votes against it, is it, is it opens up for a possible lawsuit?
Prodeo's the Spanish immersion. Would you be willing to answer that one, since you are the official attorney?
Well, Madam Mayor and council members, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts in that question, but the proposed improvements that are being put forth are within the allowed use. I mean, they don't have to change any zoning or anything like that, so we don't have any of those issues. Does the city, you know, have to act as a conduit issuer on the bonds? We don't have to, but it's my understanding that with the project, if the project may move forward anyway, and we've done this in the past, it's been the city's position to do this for other entities within the city, plus you stand to earn a fair amount of money with really no risk on your end because of the issuance or the conduit nature. So, but all we're talking about tonight is the issuance of the conduit bonds, the preliminary approval. I wouldn't see any issue with that. You're not even approving the future issue, you know, the final approval. You're just saying, yes, we're considering this, and we're, we want to take the next step with it.
Is that close enough for now?
Does that mean, so like if it gets to the next part, you know, and it does go through, or it doesn't go through, or if it's blocked, could it open up to a possible lawsuit?
Well, Madam Mayor and council members, I'm not going that far ahead. I mean, we're, we'll take it a step at a time, and right now, we're only at the preliminary stage.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Next? The next name I have is Natty Stevenson.
Good job on the pronunciation. Thank you. Hey, thanks for having me tonight. Appreciate your time and how hard it is to be sitting on that side of the board. I know you make a lot of tough decisions, and we're, I know a lot of people are thankful for the time and service you give. Having said that, you might know I'm one of the members of the local school board, and I'm also Columbia Heights resident. I actually live on Fourth Street, just two blocks from the current site of Oak Hill Baptist Church, so come to you as one member of the school board, not representing the school board, but also as a community member. And I have some thoughts about a charter school entering our community, just to lay out there, and I know this is about the bond issue, and I'll get back to that, but I kind of want to set the platform about the idea of this charter school entering our community. The first is, as a school board member, I've talked to a lot of members of our constituency, a lot of which are residents of Columbia Heights, and one of the things I keep hearing about time and time again is retention of local students. We are a bordered district with, you know, roughly 4,000 potential students. We have fixed borders and a really small school district zoning. We have current charters and private schools in our community, which we feel are really collaborative with us. They offer different missions. They have different focuses than we do, but the similar, the similar academy coming in is potentially very similar to ours. And I'm wondering how this will impact the health of our school district and the other charter and private schools that are already in our community. When I think about our community, I think about our small-town feel. I know we all talk about that and how it feels like a small-town feel where we take pride. We have this Heights pride, we even hashtag it, right? We have Heights pride, and we know that strong schools build strong communities, and strong communities have higher home values, more people want to go there, want to live there. And I'm wondering about the long-term effects of this. It feels like we're playing, as we consider a bond, we're considering, it seems like we're playing the short game instead of the long game. As I heard from Mr. Hoff, Hoff, is that it? He said, "We're earning a fair amount of money with little or no risk," and I would argue that perhaps it's little or no financial risk, but what is the image risk? What are we saying about kind of being the small-town, tight-knit community that we are that does really rally around things like homecoming and different things, and considering the long-term effects of potentially giving a big fracture in the schools that are already in our community? I'm also wondering about the tax, the taxing. As you know, our school district recently went out to get a bond for, we, after two times, received $17 million, and that took two votes by a lot of members of our community, and it seems interesting that with the decision of a council of five, you get to kind of sign into, sign into existence $24 million. So that's, and I realize it's not that simple, but I did hear, it said that the city is about, you know, creating public, safe's public safe, or space, roadways, and different things, but I want it to be, I want it to be acknowledged that if you enter into this, you are entering into the system of public schools. As a charter school, it's a public school that uses public tax dollars. So by doing this, you are entering into the realm of public schools. And I want to ask, you're getting 20K now, but what will you lose? Let's see, I want you, I want to just ask you to consider postponing this. Consider having conversations about it, to get creative, because if it was your, and I hear the argument that if we don't do this in other cities, we'll just pick it up and they'll make the 20, the $220,000, they'll just do it. But if it was your, kind of your brother or sister on the line, where you said, "Well, if we don't do it, my brother, if we don't do this thing, that might be hard on my local brothers or sisters," would you do it if it was still your brother? Would you say yes to doing that if it was your brother that was, that had a potential to be disadvantaged? And I'm asking you to get creative, go to the seller, buy it. I don't even know the limits, that's your specialty, but I'm asking you if there's a creative way to do this. And then as a resident who lives on Fourth, I'm also asking about the potential traffic problem on Fourth, two blocks away from it, at Fourth and 44th, that we have, we already know we have traffic problems with the schools on 49th, and that's a county road, and it's much, much bigger road. How will that impact traffic on my road where we have constantly cars parked down the road?
Sorry, it's nuts.
And then, and then will that impact my road repairs? Am I going to end up getting assessed a big ticket when my road needs to get changed to increase the volume for schools that are now not designed for parent pickup of, you know, potentially 500-plus students? So, questions? So, just something to think about. Thanks for your time. Sorry that was so long.
Ariane Kokes? Sorry if I said that wrong.
Hi, I'm Ariane Kokish. Mayor, council members, thank you for taking the time to hear us on this issue. I am a parent and community member here in Columbia Heights and also a teacher in the Columbia Heights schools, and I was an active member of the referendum team last year, working hard to pass a large referendum for our schools that we desperately needed in our, in our public school here in Columbia Heights. And I have had questions from people that were part of that work, wondering why we had to work so hard to go to the taxpayers to get the money for our public schools that are, that, I mean, that's how we're rated when you go out to realtors, when you go out to the community. We're rated on how our public schools look, and we have to fight so hard to fund them. And a charter school can get a signature, and there it is. And that seems unfair, so that was one of the first issues that I have. And also, I've worked actively at the legislative level, so I ask if we are considering, Minnesota does charters better than other states. So there's a lot of myths that you'll hear about charters and how they're, but they exist here. They're not going away in Minnesota, but we have a number of them within our borders that are bordering us already that cause issues for our schools. As a public school teacher, we often see students that have gone to charter schools at the beginning of the year, especially students with IEPs, and then partway through the year, that school cannot handle them, and they come back. But it's past the per pupil funding date, and so that funding has already gone to the charter school, and now we get that pupil without the money that comes with them, and we're short as a public school. So the way that charters can discriminate against people with IEPs, including, I have two children that are on IEPs here in our public schools, is a definite question at the legislative level, and we're working on legislation there. So I would ask, if you're going to encourage and work with, on a city council level, this, then I need to see you working with our legislators to say that we also need to support the programs that bring the money back to our public schools, because there are programs that reimburse those funding out there that we haven't been able to get legislatively to fix things. So we need to see you on our side as a public school advocate when it comes to the state and federal legislature, if you allow a public, a charter school to walk into our, our community in this way. And I also just urge you to remember that if you're going to be making money off from a charter school, while we have public schools that are desperately fighting for funding with the special education cross-subsidy, maybe that money you make should be invested back into our public schools. That would be, when we talk about creative ways to do this, if we have to do this, can we do it by reinvesting into the schools that lose money because of charters in the community? Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Jasmine Sims McAllister?
Good evening, I'm Jasmine. I have been a Columbia Heights resident for, on and off, for 46 years, and I have a couple of points to make. Number one, Prodeo Academy is not in a Spanish immersion school. I have a child who's eight years old, who has gone there for four years, and the first two years, Prodeo was already located in Columbia Heights. So they are already known to our community, have been a good addition to our community, so this shouldn't be a big leap to re-welcome them back into our community. The other issue is, I had older kids who went to Columbia Heights Public Schools in the early 2000s, 2005, 2006, and I had issues at Columbia Heights School and ended up getting an out-of-district placement for them. I would have liked to have had a choice to be able to keep them in Columbia Heights had there been other charter schools at that time, there weren't. But I just want to, as a parent, I think it's good to be able to have choices, and I think Prodeo Academy brings those choices back to Columbia Heights. Thank you.
Next?
Hi, good evening, I'm Lorraine Mueller. Like Natty, I'm also a member of the Columbia Heights School Board, and just wanted to come and talk, again, as an individual, you know, this is not comments from the board. And I want to start off by saying that my comments are more broad in terms of not necessarily this situation at this time, but taking a really broader look at, at a way and an opportunity for all of our schools in Columbia Heights within our borders to be successful. And, and I think most importantly, I've continued to advocate for all students and want them to be successful in all opportunities. I have my own personal kids who, who learn in different ways and who sometimes school works for and sometimes school doesn't, so I understand the needs and the options that parents need to have at times for schools. But I think we need to look at it as a city, making these decisions, maybe not right now in this decision, it seems like this is actually, you know, kind of already too late for some of these comments, but we need to look at other land uses within our community and a saturation point. And there are other churches and other areas that are zoned for church and school use, and some of those may become available from time to time, but there are only so many kids that reside within the boundaries of Columbia Heights, and I think Natty had mentioned about 4,000. And as we continue, and if we continue to bring in schools, we reach a saturation point. We reach a point of which we have charter schools, private schools, and public schools, and all of those schools will suffer enrollment issues because there aren't enough kids to fully enroll or fill up all of the different schools within our borders. And adding, you know, having a school, and, you know, Prodeo has been here in the past, and to have them back in a larger capacity, it does have an impact on the number of seats that are in classrooms and the number of kids that are available within our community to fill those seats. And when you increase the number of enrollment options or the number of seats in classrooms, we lose an economy of scale that's available to each of our schools, whether it's the public school, the private school, or other charter schools. In order to be successful, especially in this environment, whether you're a public school or elsewhere, especially if you require public funding, as, you know, one of our community members mentioned, that special education cross-subsidy that impacts every educational environment, we have to have schools that are full in order to have an economy of scale to provide the programs and to meet the needs and the expectations of our parents, of our students, and our community members, so that our schools can be successful. When we have empty seats in our schools, we are missing dollars that follow those students, and therefore, it requires, it requires cuts. It requires us to say, okay, we don't have the dollars that normally would follow these kids, and, and we have programs that we can't fund, whether it's at a charter school or a private school or a public school, we don't have kids in those seats, we don't have the money to fund the necessary programs, and it impacts greatly all of our schools. So again, whether it's this situation or looking forward, to really look at what land use opportunities are there for our city, whether it's to create tax base, to have taxable entities on our, our real estate, or whether it's uses that continue to drive other revenues within our, within our schools. So this is actually going, you know, whether it's now or later, we will have a challenge for all schools in our community in order to be successful. Another important note that I'll talk about too in terms of, in terms of school funding comes with, the majority of schools' budgets are tied to staffing. So the majority of the money is used to pay for staffing. Columbia Heights Public School is the second-largest employer in the city of Columbia Heights, and, and there are a lot of local Columbia Heights people that work in the schools. And when, and that would, I would venture to say, would be the same for our private schools and other charter schools. And when you have, you know, you have funding issues, you make staffing reductions because that's, that's the only money that you have to use. And, and looking at that, we're not talking about just teachers. We do have resident teachers living within our communities, but we also have educational assistants, resource, recess monitors, lunchroom supervisors, cooks, custodians, maintenance and ground workers, people that are living within our communities that need prospering schools in order to maintain their, their employment. So I just, you know, think about, this is now the time to talk about this, as we're looking at this bond revenue issue, and, and we forward think about what, what may come later within our community, that this decision does have impacts that are far-reaching throughout our community. And the end goal is to make sure that any school that operates within the city of Columbia Heights can be successful and can adequately educate our students and can do so and meet the expectations of our community members, those students and their parents.
Thank you. Next? Please, no clapping. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley, and then this is Weenie as well, and she's another parent in the community, and our piece is pretty short and sweet, but we wanted to come up together.
Good evening. I live in Columbia Heights. My children, they're going to Prodeo Academy. This is better school. This is better school city when all of us have choice on when to send our children. Please continue the process with Prodeo Academy. It's only short, I have to say.
Yeah, and I support that as well. I am a mom. We both are parents. Her kids currently go to Prodeo, and I have a little one who eventually go, and I just think the more options and choices of types of school that our children have available to go to is positive for the city, so that's our piece.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have another name, but I'm not sure what they're speaking on, but if Jane Bona is, is on this?
Yes.
Okay, come up then.
Thank you, Mayor Schmidt and council members. Thanks for having us here tonight and having the public hearing. I'm the principal of Immaculate Conception School, so when, when people might mention the private school in, in the district of Columbia Heights, I am the parochial school principal there, and am, am so happy to be able to say that I am the principal there. In the last eight and a half years, we have doubled our enrollment at Immaculate Conception, and we really believe that we answer a special call of faith, academic, and service. I'm certainly not here to question the integrity of another school, the school district or a charter school, but I do wonder about the proximity of a charter school K-8, and we're preschool through grade eight, so close to Immaculate Conception, and then, as it's been stated a few times by other speakers, we're relatively, geographically, a relatively small district. And, and I do believe that the, the public school district works very hard and, of course, is incredibly inclusive to meet the needs of the children there in the public schools. People choose parochial schools for a variety of reasons, and, and we believe we answer that call. So my, my question is, what other speakers have said too, will, will you please give this your, your deepest thought and, and think about, is this this the right thing? Is this the right risk for our community? It sounds like financially, it's a win. But is that the only thing to win here? And again, I'm not questioning the school's integrity, I'm sure that, I'm sure that they do a very fine job. But, Immaculate Conception is celebrating eighty years this year of Faith, Academics, and Service. And I know you all know where it is, and really, we really consider ourselves a beacon in this community of Columbia Heights. And it will be a challenge, though, to compete with a charter school and academy that is free. So, and I realize, all the other public schools are free too, but this will be, it'll be new, it'll be different, and it's, it's a challenge, and it's, it's a challenge that I, I'm, I was wishing that we, we weren't going to have, but it sounds as if the, the school has already purchased land, or they're in the process of it. So, I'd like you to consider, what is your role as, as city council members, in terms of supporting the schools that are already here in, in our district?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak regarding this? Is, are you wanting to speak regarding the charter school, the conduit bonds?
I'm sorry.
Are you here to talk about the conduit bonds, regarding the charter school?
Actually, it was about civic pride, okay?
That would be at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, that's at the end. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rick Campion, I'm the executive director of Prodeo Academy. I just want to speak to the vibrancy of a city. I've had conversations with city council people in different cities, and at one point, one of them said to me that he's not a fan of charter schools. And I think it's important to say, with Catholic schools represented here in district schools and charter schools, I'm not either. I'm not a fan of charter schools, I'm a fan of good schools for kids, right? And if you have a, a community where you have good schools for kids, and frankly, some people like to say it's not competition, there is a little competition, that's better for the schools, and better for the kids. So, I think a child who, a family who can choose where to send their kid, lives in a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak regarding this issue about conduit bonds for Prodeo Academy?
How's it going today? My name's Tim Grimes, I live in Columbia Heights, I've been living here for about twelve years now. My kid's been going to Prodeo since the beginning. It started with kindergarten and first grade, now I have a sixth grader, starting next year. I had so many choices of schools to choose to send my kids, and when Prodeo came and knocked on my door, you know, they showed me their curriculum, you know, and how their students, you know, average out compared to statewide. And their curriculum, to me, just stood out better than the public schools in Columbia Heights. And I feel like, with Prodeo being in Columbia Heights, I feel like it would improve the children's learning. It's a safe community, you know, I love it, and I would love Prodeo to be in Columbia Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get your name to Nicole, please? Is there anybody else that would like to speak regarding this issue? Last chance, anybody else want to speak regarding this issue? Erin, you can come up and speak.
I'm not sure if the public hearing's the best opportunity, but before you would close and take a vote, I know that I would like to give the finance director the opportunity to address a specific distinction between a referendum for voter-supported levy and this conduit issuance, because I think it's, it's very relevant to the decision that's actually being made tonight. And I know the finance director would like to provide some clarity on that, if he could. Thanks.
All right, go ahead. Joe, if you want to come forward, please.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, for the, members of the public, as the community director mentioned, I'm the finance director for the city. And earlier in the public hearing, one speaker had posed a sort of rhetorical question to you about, that it took many, many voters to approve the bond issue for the school district recently, and only five of you to approve this transaction. And there's a good reason for that, that's all I'm here to clarify. So, the bond referendum that the public school district obtained is a request from the taxpayers to take tax money and spend it on the public school program. But the transaction that you're reviewing here now, is a request from a private entity to borrow money from private bondholders, not the taxpayers, and then to repay those private bondholders. And that difference, that very large difference in these transactions is why that can be approved by the five of you, versus having to go to a referendum election.
Thank you for that clarification. So, last chance, anybody else want to speak regarding this?
Hi, Natty Severson, and I'm assuming that he is referring to my comment, and what you're saying is actually right, I do understand how the schools are funded, but bear in mind, the state pays, charter schools helps to pay up to ninety percent of their rent. So, you're, you're choosing how state dollars go, rather than how local dollars go. So, it's still taxpayer money. Just want to be clear on that. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, then, can I get a motion to close the public portion of this?
I don't move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Williams, a second by councilmember Biskins, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Madam Mayor.
Then, let's move on to the discussion of the, if there are any other questions or comments regarding from staff or council members, if you want to make any comments?
I, I have a comment, Madam Mayor and councilmembers.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Just to clarify, there's, you know, again, we're, we're mixing a couple issues tonight, and, and that's fine, we can separate that out. But there's comments coming that, that seem to suggest that the city somehow has to allow Prodeo Academy to come into the city of Columbia Heights. And, and that's not true, they chose Columbia Heights to come here. It's a permitted use, you don't have any say in whether they can come into the city or not, that, that's done, the code allows it. And as far as the financing of it, you know, the conduit bond, again, the clarification's been made by the finance director, and I think that was a good clarification to make. This is a financing method that's been created by the legislature, you're not coming up with this on your own, or deciding to treat somebody special. This is what is provided for, and you have a, it, it's kind of like a private, a business subsidy, you have a, a business that wants to come into your community, and propose a twenty-five-million-dollar project. And this is their way of asking, hey, can you partner with us, just like you have with the school district and so forth, on a, on this conduit bonding. So, that's what you're talking about tonight, is the, the conduit that's created by the legislature, you're not doing anything special to, it's, you're not choosing them as a special recipient, it's, it's a request, you have the ability to do it, and there's no consequence to the general taxpayers of the city, that's why you are able to decide that issue.
Thank you. Is anybody else?
One question. It was stated earlier too, that someone had said that if we're, if we do this, then we're getting into the school business, and I just want to clarify that that's not what's happening here, we're not going to be, just because it was mentioned in the public hearing.
Again, you're not, you're not permitting this school to be here, they already have the right to come into Columbia Heights.
Right, so by doing this, we're not getting into the school business?
Well, you're already in the school business, in the sense that the code allows schools to come into the city.
All right, anybody else have any comments? Councilmember Biskins, go ahead.
I wanted to ask Erin some questions I had asked him earlier today, because I've been struggling with this all weekend. I have some personal belief, personal things I've been thinking about. However, as a council member, I have to think of things that are good for the city, and how this fits with the city. And so, I'll ask Erin some of the questions I asked today. I asked Erin if it's possible for the school, for the city to actually control the number of schools in our city, and would you like to tell them what you told me? As far as asking if the council could actually talk about it, this is midstream here, we can't do anything about this here, but in the future, we have properties coming up. Is it possible for us to even control that?
Councilmember Biskins, I think the short answer is that it is difficult, as Mr. Hafte alluded to, especially if it's in a zoning district where it's a permitted use, in this case by conditional use permit. So, zoning already provides for spaces where schools can go, and churches can go within residential communities. I suppose one of the strategies that the city could employ would be acquisition of either one of those properties, should they be available for sale, and contemplating a rezoning. But short of that, it's fairly common for these two uses to interchange, especially in fully-developed communities, and there isn't a whole lot, or if anything, that you can do, when the underlying zoning permits the, the use.
Thank you. It's, it's, I've just struggled with it, but at the same time, this isn't anything against the public schools or private schools in the community. As a council member, we also have to think about what's good for the city as a whole, and there's lots of ways that the city can support the public school, and this is a business transaction, from a council perspective. Just because we vote on it tonight, and I don't know how the other council members are going to vote on it, doesn't mean this process, this project will go through, but if we voted, if we voted no, they can go to the county, and the county can either be their conduit, or they can assign another city. So, you know, I was thinking of a protest, no, but it's not going to do anything, because they're going to still go, be able to go ahead and get their project done, because this is between a private, private owner, the church, and the buyer. And the laws and the rules that govern this whole process were written by the state and the federal government, not by Columbia Heights. It's interesting how they put these laws and regulations together for this project, but in this position here, I don't see us as, I know a lot of people are very upset about this, I totally understand where you're coming from, but I have to sit in the city, you know, as a city council member, and think about a bigger picture, and how this fits in with the city itself too.
Okay, is there any other council members that want to make any comments? Or we move on? I just want to say, thank you, and I appreciate all the help you've been in this. I appreciate the input from the community too, I thank you for the comments. What we are voting on tonight is whether we will, this is a preliminary approval for conduit bonds, this is not the final approval. As Jim has stated, the final, if this does go through, it would be September ninth. I just wanted to, I had downloaded a copy from the League of Minnesota Cities as to conduit bonds, common, the three most conduit, common conduit bonds in Minnesota are qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. These can be typically a nursing home, hospital, senior, other affordable housing, which we have done in the past, K through twelve, to college, but any nonprofit, and in the past, the YMCA and Minnesota Public Radio have always, have been able to do conduit bonds. Housing revenue bonds are another one, it's been used for helping with housing, and we've also done this for helping a project here in Columbia Heights. The third one that is most common is a small-issue manufacturing bonds, where the user of the proceeds is a manufacturing business that constructs manufacturing facilities that meet federal requirements. So, there is multiple different types of conduit bonds, very common in Minnesota, and there are others too that are less common. But these are all approved by the state, we've had charter schools in the city, in the state since nineteen ninety-two, I think the first one was built. So, it is not a new thing. What is our goal? Our goal is to provide the best choices for our kids. As a parent, that was the one thing I looked at, I looked at, what is the best way I could teach my kids? We used a parochial school when my kids were young. We used, but then they moved up, we also homeschooled. We also did, we looked at charter schools, but at that time, the closest charter school was not something that we wished to do. So, we, we ended up doing a shared time at the high school, well, actually, my daughter did middle school shared time, and then did shared time at the high school too later on, and my son graduated as a homeschooler, but he graduated with shared time. So, we, we've used most of these things, and some other things that haven't been stated, but the best, you want to have the best for whatever works for your kids. And if your kids are going to do better at the public school, I say, please, use the public school, if they're going to be better taught at the parochial school, please, think about it. It's going to cost you some money, but it, it's well worth it, it's for your children. If you can utilize the charter program, great, that's something, a choice that we've been given in, in Minnesota, and there's many people that have done that. What is, how is this going to affect our city? We've had developers look at our city, and they look at our schools, but they're not just looking at the public schools, they're looking, they looked specifically at your school, Jane, and thought, what a great school, what an asset to the community. And they thought, that's going to be incentive, we're going to tell people who move to the city, that's a good school to look at, they're also looking at the public schools. And now, Prodeo, it's not something that's brand-new to the city, it is something that has been here. So, it's, it's an entity that has been here, we've worked with it, we, we, and they're building in approved area, that is an allowed use. We have no reason to turn it down at this point, everything seems above-board, we're not doing it for the money, we're doing it because what is best for the kids in this community. Anybody else have any comments?
I'll add to some of that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I've talked to a lot of the parents in this community as well, and the parents do deserve a choice on where to send their children. Not everybody wants to go to the public school, not everybody can go to the private schools, but some want a different style, different teaching. I've experienced both the public and the private school that both spoke tonight, so I would welcome it to this charter school, I've heard good things about it, I've talked to a few people that have gone there, so, or are going there, I should say. And bottom line is, parents deserve the choice. So, I agree, it'll add to the competition of the schools, and it'll make it better for our kids overall.
All right, can I have a motion to weigh the reading, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Biskins, second by councilmember Williams, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then I need a motion to approve?
Move to approve Resolution Number 2019-63, a resolution granting preliminary approval for the issuance of charter school lease revenue bonds Prodeo Academy project, to finance the acquisition, renovation, and equipment of a project under Minnesota statutes, Sections 469.152-469.1655 as amended, and authorizing the reimbursement of expenditures made in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Second.
Motion by councilwoman Biskins, second by councilmember Navinsky, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Then, the next part will be on September ninth. Next item on the agenda is a motion to deny variance requests for property located 4320 Stinson Boulevard.
All right. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. DT Meisinger Development, on behalf of Alexi and Jennifer James, have requested a variance to the wall height requirement, for a proposed attached garage to be located on the subject property located at 4320 Stinson Boulevard Northeast. Currently, the property is vacant, and the property owners are planning to construct a new single-family home on the property. The proposed house would meet the setbacks and height requirements, however, the attached garage, as proposed, exceeds the ordinance allotment for total wall height. The plans that you received in your packet originally had two variance requests, one for the wall height and one for the total height of the garage, that has now changed. It's my understanding that the applicant emailed you that updated plan. I do have a copy as well, that I can put up on the screen for our cable technician to, to show as well, on the screen. So, the new plan does eliminate one of the variance requests for the total height. There is still a variance request for the wall height, however. The city's zoning ordinance defines accessory buildings or structures as a building or structure, or portion of a structure subordinate to and serving the principal structure on the same lot. In the standards which, which regulate- In the standards which regulate the construction and maintenance of accessory structures, they include that the wall height cannot exceed nine feet. The proposed garage has 12-foot walls and exceeds the wall height by three feet. The applicant has requested a variance to allow the proposed garage, in which the narrative details the reasoning for that request. And according to the applicant, the request for the taller walls is due to the location of the garage on the subject property and water runoff concerns. Additionally, it's noted that there could be financial impacts to lowering the garage to meet the wall height requirement. We had a planning commission meeting last week, and at that meeting, staff recommended that the commission recommend denial of the variance request. Staff's recommendation was based on the analysis of the findings of fact that are outlined in the staff report that was attached to your council letter there from the planning commission. Additionally, it did not appear that the requests meet the legal standard that are set forth in state law in order to determine a practical difficulty. And cities must apply a three-factor test in considering variance requests, and all those factors should be satisfied when approving a variance. And the three factors are reasonableness, uniqueness, and essential character. While there's no argument that this is a nice-looking home, and it will be great to see a new home built in Columbia Heights, the argument for whether or not this is a unique situation was hard for staff to, to make that finding. So that is, because we couldn't find that all, that it meets that three-factor test, that is staff's recommendation and also the planning commission's recommendation. So, in your council letter on page three and four, there is two different motions. The motion before you tonight is to deny the request for the variances based on those findings outlined in the planning report. However, I did provide motions and a sample resolution for you if, tonight you decide to move forward with approving the variance request. I will note that on the resolution, there are two variance requests that is now going to, we'll have to, if you do move forward in that direction, we'll have to modify that resolution. So with that, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions regarding this property? Any of the council members? All right. I'm, this is a public hearing, so we are open up to the public, and I know we have a couple of public members that would like to speak, so, go ahead.
David Meisinger.
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 Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Dave Meisinger, DT Meisinger Development, the contractor of record. Alexa James is here with me this evening, the owner of the property. Just a clarification note, the planning commission voted four to three for this, so it wasn't a seven-zero vote. So there were some questions that came up that couldn't be answered that evening. After the planning commission meeting, we spent two, a day and a half trying to come up with resolutions. The one is what was presented earlier, that we changed the pitch of the roof to 512 to reduce it by three feet. That eliminated the need for that variance request. And we did offer a second variation to address the 12-foot ceiling in the garage. We did meet with staff today at 11:00 a.m. and went over that. And again, it was, in our opinion, it's a gray area, that, you know, your city code does not define what wall height is. We presented a solution that, in our opinion, meets a nine-foot wall. And again, staff wasn't, acceptance of it, I guess we could say, it's a, again, that option was thrown out there as well on our behalf. Now, we're modifying the plan to meet what we think is code. And again, it's, I guess it's up, I don't know if it's up to you or the staff, but again, the staff didn't have a reasonable, in our opinion, solution to this problem. It's not defined in black and white what the definition of wall height is. So I know if you guys looked at the plans that we had sent you over the weekend, that we offered the cantilever in the, in the perimeter of the garage. Again, it's a detriment to the use of his space, but again, we're compromising to try to make this, this work for everybody here. So I guess if, if that's not going to happen, then we can talk about the, the variance request. But do you have any questions regarding what we offered for the garage cantilever? I guess is the question. And we do have a city attorney here as well, that, again, we looked in the city code today together and the IRC building code book, and there's nothing defines wall height. Even though it's specified in your code that you cannot exceed nine feet wall height, it doesn't say where that starts, where that ends. So again, if you see our plan, it's our opinion that we, we met the nine-foot wall height, that the ceiling starts at nine feet then.
Anybody have any questions?
Again, we're doing this in a spirit of compromise to get past all this variance. Again, we're just, I guess between us and staff, we couldn't come to a conclusion today.
Okay. All right. And you, you wanted to speak.
Thanks for, for hearing us. My name's Alexi James, and first and foremost, my wife and 18-month son, we're all really excited about this project. It's not every day you have the opportunity to buy a lot and build a house. You know, we were told that this would probably be one of the most difficult or challenging projects, and, you know, with that, we're still really excited about it. I think we're dangerously close with a plan to build a beautiful house in a neighborhood we're really excited about joining. We love the park, we love the lake. My wife and I are very active in our community right now. We live in northeast. My wife's on the board for Botno. I'm on the association for my townhouse association. And, you know, we'd like to do the same thing moving here. So, again, we really appreciate you guys looking at this. Our biggest concern as, as property owners is to mitigate any hardship or risk down the road. It's a challenging lot, as you know. This lot was not designed to be split into five, and so this lot is challenging. And, you know, we've, we've got a plan where we think that we're mitigating risk with water runoff properly. We don't want a driveway that's going to be dangerously steep either. We have aging parents that visit, and, you know, one of the thoughts was to raise the garage to reduce the height of the walls, but that would create a 17-degree driveway, which is extremely steep. And, and I think we would need a, a variance request for that. So, again, I think David outlined that we, we believe our plan is, is, you know, now meeting all the, all the code. I didn't want to reduce the pitch of the, of the garage roof, because now that doesn't actually match the pitch of the, the house. But I was okay with that, just, just to make sure that, you know, we did meet regulations. So, you know, we really are trying our best to, to hit every, every point. So, again, thanks for, thanks for hearing this.
I just have one question. Did you look at other housing plans, house plans, to see if there was any other style or type that could actually fit the property without the issues that you're having with this one?
Yeah, we, we looked at a lot of different house plans. We looked at what we could do with this house plan. We've got a surveyor that we're working with as well, and a draftsman, and we've, I mean, it's been months that we've been trying to figure out a way. And this latest plan, I was actually really excited about seeing, because I think that we're able to technically meet every, every regulation.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding this? The, the plans are, I mean, the house design is beautiful. At this point, our ordinance is what it is, and for us to change it for you puts us in an awkward situation, because then if somebody else comes up, then we'd have to change it for them to automatically. So at this point, we, I am going to say it's, we're not ready to change, but you'll get that in the vote, find out from, when everybody votes, and see what they have to say. But my opinion is, we do have, we do have ordinances, and for a reason. They're, and I know our staff is looking at them, too, so if, if we find a lot of people have, have issues with this, we, we will relook at it. But at this point, you're the first person that's come to us with this issue. Did you look at lowering the footings to, lowering the garage?
We have, Madam Mayor. I mean, again, here's our issue. We have the severe slope on the back of this property, that we're trying to maintain the most of that for the aesthetics of the property. That's why he purchased a lot. So we have an elevation of a house foundation here, and we have a garage here. The garage needs to be here to meet your code of 10% slope on a driveway. We can raise the garage, but then we're going to have a driveway like this. We do have, it was submitted to the planning commission from our surveyor of record that he has the house set as low as possible, in his professional opinion, that we can go on that house, and still maintain, you know, some degree without having to dig 50 feet back and build a sheet pile wall. So again, it's, you mentioned that you have the, the code for a reason, but you also have the various requests for a reason as well, for when a unique property like this comes up, but we have a situation. Again, we're, we've modified our plan already to try to help resolve all this. But again, in our opinion, it is a unique situation with that piece of property. And again, we're just trying to mitigate any future water problems on that hill. You can build retaining walls as high as you want, as far back as you want, there's still going to be water coming down from the upper property of that entire structure. All the water in the neighborhood goes down to the lake.
It does.
So we're basically at the bottom of a hill, going east, west, and north, south. So again, that is a unique situation that I don't think can be replicated, you know, in town. Again, we don't want to set a precedent here. In our opinion, I don't think we are. Again, I think we do have a unique situation. And again, we have looked at every scenario, how to lower the slab, the house, do this, do that. We've gone back and forth for a month with the surveyor. So again, we came up with this proposal here, you know, to mitigate the, the wall height. We think it's a good solution. It, it works with everybody, plus it continues to move the project forward, you know, at the way that my client wanted to purchase the lot and build his home. And again, you could build any style home, and we're still going to have a problem with the water coming down the hill. Again, we're, because we're fighting water for both directions. So it's hard to build something even more, even more narrow, more towards the street, you're still going to have water pooling behind it that we need to swale off to the south, because that's the lowest spot of the lot.
I had heard that there was possibly another plan that you were looking at, too. Is that true, or not?
No.
All right. Any other questions or comments from staff, or, go ahead, John?
I just got one. At the, at the planning meeting last week is that there was a lot of good questions brought up. A lot of them were answered, but, but what they, what the question, you know, the questions that were brought up by the planning commission was good. They were all good questions. You've got to admit, it was a nice, nice meeting, questionable, perfect. But at the end, it was still a four to three vote, because they didn't follow, I mean, it didn't come in with the guidelines for any kind of variance situation. So I just, I'd like to let you know that the planning commission did have a good question and answer meeting that night before they made their vote, so that's all I have.
Kevin Hanson, you looked at this property, too? Do, do you have any additional comments?
No. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the grading plan that was submitted certainly, I think, is fine for drainage. You know, they're proposing to more or less divide the site drainage directly to the east and then kind of wrapping around the retaining wall and coming where it naturally flows anyways. So what we were able to review and what was, based on what was submitted, is fine as far as site drainage goes.
And have you sent your preliminary plans to Rice Creek Watershed yet?
We have not.
I'd caution you to do that, because they are known to be very picky. So that would be a good next step, actually. If there, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak regarding to this property? And this is for the property at 4320 Stinson Boulevard? Is anybody here would like to speak regarding that property? Anybody else? All right, then can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Could I speak?
Regarding this property?
No, about the issue that you are pulling the rental property license.
Sir, we're, we're discussing just this property right now.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Biskin. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then, there are no other questions or comments? Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to deny the request for variances to the height restrictions in City Code Section 9.106, as the application does not meet the findings of fact and practical difficulty standard.
Okay. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Novinski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we, could we get a roll call, please, Nicole?
Councilmember Biskin?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Mayor Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mershen?
Yes.
Councilmember Novinski?
Yes.
All right. It's four to one, so eyes have it, so thank you. All right. Next items for consideration, we do have one, we had to move the city manager's performance evaluation session to the end of last time's meeting, so the comment is, she passed.
She's still sitting here.
She's still sitting here. I mean, the minutes, the minutes say we are, the meeting lasted two minutes, and it was pretty much a given. All right. My, my agenda doesn't show anything else, but, okay, I'm missing stuff on my agenda.
Mayor, you moved the Afghan Independence Day announcement to the bottom?
Oh, yes. Okay. This time, we have an announcement from Amina Baja for Afghan Independence Day event coming up.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Amina Baja. I'm a resident of Columbia Heights.
I'm Nasrin Sajadi, and I used to be a resident of Columbia Heights.
We are here to announce our first public event that we're having at Mershen Hall. It is our Afghan independence celebration. It will be on Sunday.
August 18th, from 4 to 9. And we're going to have kite fights, and food, and dancing, and live music, and we are here to invite everybody.
So the kite fights, can you explain that a little bit? In case you haven't seen a movie about it.
Yes. In case you haven't seen a movie or read a book about it. Kite fights, you like fly a kite, and then you cut the other person's kite with your string, and whoever's kite is still in the air wins.
Okay.
So it's pretty fun. It's super fun, it's $20, but it includes food and a lot of activities.
And it's actually the first time that this event is being hosted in Minnesota at all.
In the Midwest, I think. We're getting a lot of attention worldwide for two Afghan women throwing this party, because that's not a, that's not a common thing. So, yeah.
All right.
Hope you guys can make it.
Thank you very much. And Adam did post that picture of the event online, so if anybody has information, needs any more information, they can contact you? All right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. I am still too excited.
Well, no. I appreciate it.
Okay, my minutes, my agenda is missing the last part. I apparently didn't flip the page. All right. Next item is a report from the city council. Connie, do you want to start, please?
Sure. I attended the Gavett Place Eat and Greet. Had a pretty good turnout, and it was fun meeting people in that neighborhood. I volunteered at the Blooming Sunshine Garden at Lomiaki Park several times since the last council meeting. We're moving along, mulching now that we've got the cover crops grown, and get things ready for spring planting next spring. I attended and, and also helped coordinate the Heights Next Garden Tour. We, we went to 11 different gardens in our city. And we're, and I want to thank First Lutheran Church again for allowing us to borrow your driver and your bus to take us from garden to garden. It was really nice. Accompanied Captain Matt Markham to four neighborhood watch parties Tuesday night. Even though my doctor told me I was supposed to stay home after a hip thing that was done, I went, it was fun. It was really fun. And I also attended the library board. And again, they're looking forward, they're starting to figure out if they want a facilitator for their strategic planning that they're hoping to start in September. So that took up a good part of the discussion, along with just going over the budget and stuff, so that's it.
All right. Councilmember Williams?
Nothing to report.
All right. So, Mershen?
I already reported on the findings of the planning commission meeting, and I rode with a JP officer. And for a national night out, it was a good time, went to different places. And that's about it. That's all I have.
Councilmember Novinski?
All right. I, too, was also at the Eat and Greet at Gavett. Good turnout, good, good time to meet some new people out there. I think it's the first time that they've had it there. Was able to go to the ICS Fun Fest that they had this last weekend. If you haven't been there, it's a good time by all. They've had some great bands Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So check that out next year. Made it to actually nine of the national night out parties. I didn't bring an officer, I brought my 12-year-old with as a timekeeper, so she did pretty good by giving me the heads up and getting me out of there. I met a lot of nice people. I really wish we could almost do this twice a year, because it's a time where the community members get out, they enjoy each other, they meet their neighbors, and are members get out, they enjoy each other, they meet their neighbors, and are eating so relatively in a good mood. On Saturday, I took some time and actually helped out at the recycling center. I had never volunteered there, but since we had given them some more tasks with the plastic bags and the styrofoam, I wanted to see how it was all working. And good job Heights residents because that place was pretty consistently, cars going through it for the hour and a half I was there, multiple people with oil, some with bags, styrofoam. If you are gonna bring the packing peanuts, please put them in a bag for them so they don't have to chase it around in the wind. And thank you to the Kiwanis Club for stepping up and volunteering and getting that out of our trash system and into the recycling.
Thank you. Our city was able to host our joint law enforcement office meeting at Furinoka County, and we had it at our Public Safety Building on July 24th. As a master water student, I actually got to go to another city and see how they did their stormwater cleanup. Lauderdale has an advantage over us because they are actually smaller than we are and very, they were very organized. People just stopped in and helped, said we wanted to help clean up. So, next cleanup, make sure you talk to the MWMO. They have fantastic grabbers.
Hmm, we will do that. The next cleanup's actually.
Next cleanup.
October 12th for that day.
I got to coffee with a cop at the very end, and so everybody was leaving. But I know it was at the SECA food, and I guess there was another one this last weekend too, correct? Or?
The Cone with the Cop is next Tuesday.
Cone with the Cop is next Tuesday, okay. I also got a chance to attend the Aqua Tenio Ambassador Coronation with the Columbia Heights royalty. Great bunch of girls, they had so much fun. Parents were there too. Our own Anahie, and I'm gonna probably slaughter her last name, Ordenez, who represented our city of Columbia Heights, did a fantastic job. She was in a lot of pictures. Aqua Tenio does a great job just taking care of the girls that come from all over the state to compete in the royalty. She didn't win, but she did a great job representing our city. Anahie recently just became one of our firefighters, she was just approved, and so she had that advantage over some of the other girls. She got to wear her firefighter outfit for one of the events. Got to help out with the Salvation Army School Supply giveaway, attended the car show, got to see some great cars over at the Macaulay-Conception, and this past weekend, I spent it with a bunch of Kiwanis people, and, you know, our service organizations do such a good job, whether it's taking care of our parks, or whether they're helping with kids and doing, like the Lions does that eye test, that is an amazing thing that they can do. But they're always, our kids, they're focused on our kids, with every one of these organizations are putting our kids first. Rotary too, they work hard in the schools and give great scholarship, help with scholarships for all of the students, and it's amazing to see what they do, and we're just a few people. And we could use some more people with all of those organizations because every one of them puts kids first, and appreciate it. Next item is city manager.
Thank you, just a few things. We're in full swing with budgets, so Joe's gone, but he's been very busy lately. Our newsletter, our fall newsletter, will be out in just a week or two. It's just getting finished up by Ben. As Councilmember Nowitzki mentioned, we're now doing film plastic recycling at City Hall as well, so people can drop that off in the entry, the public entry, anytime during business hours. We also started at City Hall doing organics recycling for our staff, so we're starting to get there as a staff as well as the community in general. And Amada was here, so I thought maybe she would touch on this, but I know Heights Next is doing their Dog Day event this Saturday, the 17th. And Councilmember Biskins was nice enough to give me some information. So, it starts at 9:30, it goes till 1:00. There's the fundraiser for SECA for pet food. I know the walk begins at 10:00. I know it's always a fun event to go to, just to see all the different people and their dogs, so hopefully people can make it out. It's at Kodiak Park this year, not Housit. That's all I have, thank you.
All right. City attorney?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I did forget to mention, for those who signed up for Peaches or didn't get a chance to sign up for Peaches for the Kiwanis, that is one of their big fundraisers, Peaches are arriving and will be available for pickup on Thursday, August 15th, from 9:00 to 6:00, or Friday, August 16th, from 9:00 till noon. Please, if you ordered, make sure that you pick them up. If you didn't order, stop by. It's 20 pounds of peaches for $36, or 12 pounds for 23. It's, they are at the 4001 Central Avenue Northeast, the shopping mall, and in the parking lot there. Very easy to get to. Look for the Key Club Kids, a lot of them come out to help load cars, and please, please support it if you can. Next is the community forum. At this time, individuals may address the City Council about any item not included on the regular agenda. Speakers are requested to come to the podium, sign their name and address on the form for the Council Secretary's record, and limit their comments to five minutes. Individuals are asked to state their name for the record. The City Council will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if needed, request staff to follow up or direct the matter to be added to an upcoming agenda. Generally, the City Council will not take official action on items raised at the community forum at the meeting in which they are raised. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
One moment, please.
Okay.
You guys can go through those documents. Thank you.
We don't have enough copies.
Steve wasn't here that time on the 22nd, so. Who? Steve, I don't think he was here on the 22nd. The 22nd? You mean Bobby? Yeah, yeah, thank you. You just called Steve? Jeff, Bobby, Steve's. Thanks, bud. I'm sorry, I'm a little upset. Hello, everybody, how are you? Thank you very much, I'm not good at this stuff. I'm a son of a person that.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Jeff Wagner. I've had too much caffeine today.
And what's your address that you're talking about?
4229 Central and 4225 Central. The gentlemen and the fine people, ladies that have those documents in front of you, the city of Columbia Heights had pulled the rental license for that property over a parking lot. There's approximately 54 people there, my parent is one of them. Mr. Merser, you here today, sir?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Did you meet a nice lady at VFW today?
Yes, I did.
Did you say to her that the city has been trying to get 4229 and 4225 to redo the parking lot? Did you say the city's been trying to get them to read?
This is, this time is for public comment?
Okay, you talked, okay, yeah. You talked to my mom, the city's been trying to have that property redo the parking lot for five years, is that correct, sir?
Please, this is not time for questions.
Okay. Just state your comments, we don't need direct questions right now, sir. Okay. I can't read well. Findings and facts, on May 16th, all right, basically it comes down to, last time on the 22nd, the fire chief had stated, first off, that they're, wanted to have the property redo the parking lot, all right? You'll see pictures of the property being redone. The owner of the property, Frederick, died, okay? Guardian property is neglectful, neglectful, but you have 54 people that live there. The city pulled their license, okay? The city is saying you have 45 days to move. We're getting no information from Guardian property. I don't understand, there's two things here. Guardians being neglectful, the city stated a fact that he had stated, that the city's been trying to get him to fix the parking lot, to redo it, all right? They haven't done it. These people are caught in the middle. In, on the 22nd, on your video, the chief originally, or the interim chief said they didn't redo the parking lot. Then in the end, he said, oh, they didn't repair the parking lot, they repaired it. You have 54 people that are caught in the quagmire of this. The city, we don't, you know, I don't know what the agenda is with the city is, I don't know what the agenda is of the Guardian property. Man, the owner of the property, the guy died, I don't know if the wife is just hoping to sell it. 54 people are stuck, right? My question to you is can we get a definite answer if they, if the city, all right, city manager, you haven't had no contact with the owners, correct?
We're not asking questions. Madam Mayor, I would inform the council that as of last week, the city has been sued by the owner of the property and the management company for the revocation of the licenses. So, that's in litigation as we speak, so the council will not be answering any questions or making any statements on that matter because it's currently under litigation.
So, you can make your statements, and we can listen to your statements.
Yeah. Nobody knows about that, at least, I didn't know about that. But I think the city overplayed their hand. Litigation's litigation. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Giddy Payne again. My name is Lori Mueller, and again, I'm here as the liaison from the Columbia Heights School Board to the Columbia Heights City Council, and I just wanna give you a couple of updates on what's happening with the school district. It's hard to believe that it's August and it's back to school time, so I've got a couple of things coming up as we prepare for the first day of classes. The first thing I wanna talk about is we do have two groundbreaking ceremonies coming up. We do have two construction projects that are happening, one at the high school and one at North Park Elementary. So, we do have a groundbreaking ceremony for the high school. Will be August 20th at 7:00 PM. That will be outside at the back of the high school near the tennis courts, and that will be a groundbreaking ceremony for the new band room, and we'll be talking about the performing arts improvements there as well.
Can I clarify, it's at 7:00, not 6:00?
7:00 PM on August 20th, yep.
I had 6:00.
I did 2:00 on my calendar, yeah.
I can double-check that. I did, I have the North Park groundbreaking is August 29th, and I have that one at 6:00 PM. So, that's at North Park Elementary near the playground, so that groundbreaking will be August 29th at 6:00 PM.
Is this on your website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's some events, like on the Facebook page for the school, there's event page as well.
If you could forward that information to our communication person, Ben, and he can forward it onto us.
Great. Thank you. Send it over to you, yep. So, those are the two ceremonies that we've got coming up here at the end of August. Couple other things as we look forward to open, opening schools, on August 22nd is our Columbia Academy 6th grade orientation, so all new 6th graders at Columbia Academy are invited to participate in orientation from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM on August 22nd. And then we have our open houses. So, Columbia Academy Open House is on August 27th from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM, and our three elementary schools, Highland Elementary, Valley View, and North Park, will have their open houses on August 29th from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And the high school will also have their open house on August 29th from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So, lots of activity on 49th Avenue on the 29th, and then on 27th for Columbia Academy's open house. So, great time to get in the schools and meet some teachers and get schedules and drop off school supplies. We are preparing for the first day of school, which will be September 3rd. So, Tuesday the 3rd is the first day of school, so less than, if any kids are listening, I'm sorry, less than a month away. So, that's what we've got going on here coming up at the, in August and early September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, anybody? Anybody else would like to speak? Anybody else? All right, then can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Biskins, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.